Good evening and welcome to the May 21st of regular Oyster River School Board meeting. We'll begin with the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Renee, thank you. Say again? Yeah. And a second from Denise. Are there any changes? I do have a change. The first change I'd like to do is to move the student representative report to a little earlier in the meeting. I believe up under just after district announcements. And secondly, I would like to add a non-public session. It will be the first of two to the end of the meeting. Does anyone else have any changes? Okay. All in favor of the agenda as amended? Six in favor, student rep in favor. Excellent. We have time now for public comment. I would remind you to please state your name and where you are from when you come up to speak.
Good morning, or good evening, sorry. It's been a long day. I'm Lauren Selig. I am from Durham. I'm one of your state representatives. I first wanted to say thank you to the school board and the school system for allowing us to use this space last week for a legislative listening session. We had 10 of the 12 representatives from Durham, Lee, Madbury, and Barrington present, and we had about 60 people who came to speak to us who represented all of those towns, who were glad to have the opportunity to connect. We also had several people ask us when the next listening session would be. So just a heads up that at some point, we will probably be making a similar request to either use the space or find another space that we can use so that people can come, convey what they need to, since we know not everyone can get all the way to Concord to share their various things. I would also encourage the general public to make sure to take a look at the state, the general court's website. We have a number of bills in major flux. There are a lot of things people may want to be writing to the governor about. There are a number of bills that are, for example, a bill to ban cellphone usage in schools, that's gone from telling school boards to create a policy to saying that school boards would be required to create a policy that bans cellphones bell-to-bell, no exceptions, and not allowing school districts to do what's in their own best interest. So these bills are getting, coming through. I know that my side of the caucus has been trying to modify things and make them more appropriate, but it's important to get the public's voice out there, so I encourage people to keep doing so. And then the last thing is, I know there was some social media controversy about something you guys will be discussing later. I know that there's been some great changes that make it a much less controversial thing. I think partly there was a lot of misunderstanding on the part of the public. The person who sent it to me and said, please, can you share this, was really worried, and I didn't have time to do more than say, I heard about this. Here it is for other people to be aware, but just to the extent there's really big, scary things that people might be confused about, it helps if, I know it's hard for all of us to keep track of everything, but to the extent people can get information in advance, it's always really great. And thank you all so much for your service, really appreciate it. And also congratulations to the class of 2025, who are graduating so soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruce Fenton from Durham, have four children in the school system. I understand that you're reviewing the federal guidelines on the DEI, which I mentioned last time I came in. As I said before, I think that these policies are very racist, very divisive, not inclusive. I think they are identity politics. I think they're deeply, deeply harmful. I don't see the what problem is being solved. I think it's a solution in search of a problem. I don't see, I didn't see any issues with racism or a problem that needed fixing prior to this. And in fact, really the only racist thing that I've seen in the school system is after this position, where we have, you know, one of the most highly-paid administrators in the school who is saying things like, white people are not okay, having a podcast titled, "The Problem With White People," saying another podcast titled, "White Women Need To Wash Their F-ing Legs," and I edited it to make it family-friendly. These are absurd comments, and it's an absurd ideology. It's an ideology that's along the lines of cultural Marxism and division, and it's against everything that I believe as somebody who is firmly and adamantly against racism. And I implore you to see that, to see that this is a divisive ideology, and I hope, I hope you can see that. I mean, these comments, this kind of thinking that one skin color is better than another, this should have been left behind in the 1950s and earlier. It has no place in a modern society. And even if you disagree with me on this, you have to agree that it is a hyper-partisan issue. There's not a single Republican in the world who is in favor of these issues. And this is an overwhelmingly Democrat town, and I understand that, but your job is not to be partisan. Your job is not to isolate or alienate 30 or 40, even if it's only 30 or 40% of the voters. Your job is to do math and science and history and things like the wonderful musical that was just here. I think over 900 members of our community just came in. And to have a budget that, where we have struggles with budgets for the teachers, to be taken and put towards this highly divisive ideology, I think is very wrong. And, you know, at the federal level, the voters have spoken, and they're overwhelmingly against this, I think for good reason. I think people agree with me that they think it is highly divisive, but even if you disagree, it's politics, and it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a political thing. You should be focusing on education, and that's what your mission is, and you do a great job at that, and I hope that you continue to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment? Make sure that you, if you haven't signed in, you can sign in after, and just state your name and the town that you're from.
Hi, my name is Patrick Napier. I'm from Madbury. I wasn't planning on saying anything, so therefore I didn't sign in, but I just wanted to say that when I open YouTube and type in Oyster River Schools, and I did that to find a school board meeting from a while ago, the first thing that pops up, at least for me, is WMUR's video entitled, "Oyster River Schools Grapples With Racial Incidents", from seven years ago. And I wasn't here seven years ago, but the idea that, you know, that we've never had a racial incident is clearly false when it made at least regional news seven years ago. And so, you know, I do think it's, was an issue then, is likely an issue now. And so that's essentially all I wanted to talk about on that topic, but yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, there will be time at the end of the meeting also if you have a public comment. We will move on to approval of the minutes. This time today, we have a regular meeting minutes and a non-public session. We'll begin with the regular meeting minutes from May 7th, 2025. Denise?
So moved.
Thank you very much. And a second. Gianna, thank you. Are there any corrections or changes? Yes, Denise?
Very, very minor wording under, on page one, under District Reports. When Mr. Goldsmith is talking about, well, giving his update, it talks about a flat Moheramet will be sent to every continent, it should say, except for Antarctica.
Because Antarctica is closed, which I did not know was a thing. Any other corrections, please?
I caught the same one that Denise did, but also page two of five, the second paragraph, "to attending," that's just a typo, "to attend." And then a clarification from page four of five in section nine, was the statement that I was talking about, and it says, "Change adverse effects on diversity to adverse effects on the district teachers and students by passing to the legislature as part of the budget." I think that's just a little clearer of what I was saying. That's it. Good job, as always.
Any other corrections? Okay. Can I have a vote? All in favor of the minutes as amended? One, two, three, four in favor, and student rep in favor, and two abstentions, Renee Okay, and now the non-public meeting from May 7th. Can I have a motion to approve? Kelly, thank you. And a second. Denise, thank you. Any changes to those? Okay, all in favor of the non-public meeting minutes from May 7th? One, two, three, four in favor? None opposed, and two abstentions, Renee Bennett and Heather Smith. We'll move on to district announcements.
Bill Sullivan Middle School. Came in previous meeting and shared all our dates and all the great stuff we've been doing here, but I did want to come in tonight and just mention that we had our teams come back from the World Robotics Championships. So we had two teams compete this year. They did amazing. There were over 450 teams competing in Dallas, and our two teams finished really, really well in their divisions. The two teams, their names, the first team, Team 2820A, they're called the Flying Cockroaches. Obviously, they name their own names, they come up with their own names. That's made of all, made up of all eighth graders, Ewan Kong, Devin Wilson, Olivia Liu, and Kaylee Turcot. Team 2820Y is named Kinetic Chaos, and they have some seventh graders and a sixth grader. Weston Roburge, Will Weagle, and Callan Haley are all seventh graders, and Rin Haley is a sixth grader, so they'll be back next year, I'm sure, competing. The Team 2820 was distinguished this year. They won the design award at the world competition. There are only six of these awards given out in the whole world, and our Team 2820A won one of those awards, so I wanted to make sure I let everybody know that. The award is, you know, again, they build their robots and they all compete, and that, you know, all that is, that's great stuff, too, but the design award is really, how did they make this? They make these incredible journals that they write and share, their notebooks are so detailed, they talk about the process that they went through, the thinking and the design, and to get awarded for that in the, out of this competition is amazing. So I wanted to give a shout-out to both teams for doing such an amazing work, so thank you.
Rebecca Noe from the high school. So first, I wanted to discuss the underclassmen awards that were last week and just congratulate all the recipients of the different awards for that night and the hard work that our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors did to get there. This past weekend, we also had Mamma Mia, which was absolutely spectacular. Literally, people were up and dancing in the aisles and had so much fun, so I want to congratulate Alex Eustace, the director, and the entire cast and crew because it was phenomenal. And actually, the first time I ever saw Mamma Mia, so I really, really enjoyed it. A lot of news about senior week, so I sent the flyer out last week with all the different times and dates, but I was going to review those quickly here. So Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, we have graduation practice at 9:00, and that's the week of June 2nd to June 6th. The Friday graduation practice is at 10:30. Again, send out in the newsletter, and I'll be sending it out specifically to parents tomorrow in a separate email, but also in the newsletter for the next two weeks. Monday, some of the fun things is at Kona Ice after graduation practice, and so all the seniors get to participate in that. Tuesday evening is the senior cruise. Wednesday, the 4th, is their trip to Canobie Lake. Thursday is a really busy day. After graduation practice, the senior walk starts, and this is the first year we're actually having it go through the high school also, and then they'll head out towards the middle school. Senior scholarship awards are at 5:30 in the auditorium, and the senior awards are at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Friday, the 6th, graduation will be at 6:00 PM. For an outside graduation, no tickets are necessary, and I'll be sending, as I said, details to parents tomorrow. Our middle school eighth grade step-up day is June 11th, and then I also have two summer dates for planning purposes. Our introduction to high school for parents is the evening of August 21st, that's a Thursday night, and our freshman orientation is going to be on Friday, August 22nd, so that's the Friday before school starts, and that runs throughout most of the day. Any questions for me?
Are you still singing the songs from Mamma Mia? Because I am-
Yes, but only in my car in the shower. You don't want to hear me sing. Yes.
I am singing them every day, every minute. I can't get them out of my head, but it was wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, Stella, if you are prepared.
All right. Yeah, I have a few announcements for you all tonight on the student front. First off, I want to announce once again, and I want to highlight the fact that our play, Mamma Mia, took place this weekend. All cast members did a wonderful job, and it was such a charismatic and beautiful performance. Looking ahead, the opening event of the senior art show will also be taking place on the 28th and will be held from 5 to 7 in our ORHS NPR, and all are welcome and encouraged to enjoy, and encouraged to join. To add to this, the last coffee house of the school year is coming up, and will be in coordination with the art show for a special two-in-one event, and the date has changed, though, because of this, and will now be taking place on the 29th, so mark your calendars.
So Coffee House has moved to?
Yeah, yes, sorry. Coffee House has moved to May 29th. It's kind of an allocation to allow the art show to have their opening event on the 28th, and then Coffee House to have their event on the 29th, but in the same room with the art, so that they're kind of like pairing with each other. And then following this, the science showcase will be held on June 2nd at 6:00 PM, and will be in the OHS library. And then, as our school year draws to a close, final exams are scheduled for June 13th, 16th, 17th, and then the 18th, which is set to also be the last day of school. And then, lastly, freshman breakaway to vacay will be on the 13th, and will be starting at 5:00 PM on the field. Is there any other questions?
The science, what date was that again?
That, that's June 2nd at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Yeah, in the library.
This is the time when we will say thank you to Stella for being on the board. Your input was very appreciated, and we want to wish you good luck in the future.
Thank you so much.
And if you have anything you'd like to say, please.
Yes, thank you so much. I did prepare something, if I can find it. All right. Oh, yeah. Yes, but no, I just want to say I really appreciate this, and I want to first off by simply saying thank you. Thank you all for how you've helped me learn and grow over the course of this year. Thank you for how you have encouraged me to share my voice and listened acceptingly as I've done so. Thank you for how you have embraced me and welcomed me with open arms into what is not only an amazing and inspiring, but truly important environment. And I want to thank you for the opportunity, because after spending 13 years as a student in the school district, it's been amazing to give back, to participate, and to step behind the scenes, peek behind the curtain, and experience how we make our district work and function. The Oyster River School District is built from every teacher, administrator, and student, and it is built from every parent square post, every 5:00 AM snow delay voice message, and every signed permission slip. Our district is made of moments, one meeting, one decision, and one conversation at a time. So being here in person, bearing witness to so many of these moments, is an inspiration and an honor. And how we build these moments matters. By ensuring that we have open, thoughtful, and inclusive dialogue, you all work to establish that we arrive not just at the right decisions, but that we arrive at them in the right way. This is why I believe that the work that you are doing here is so important, so core to our district and strengthening of our community values, because you are doing so much more than making choices, you are setting a tone at this level, that sets a tone and demonstrates an example for the entire district. You are leading, and you are making a difference to those in our community, one student at a time. In other words, what I first learned at Moheramet Elementary School as a five-year-old still rings true through the actions of this board. From the beginning of my scholarly career, I've been taught to follow one simple motto: We are kind, we are responsible, and we are learners. And so, in assessing this board on the beliefs and ideals of my elementary school, I think you check all the boxes. You have been kind, you've led with empathy and respect, and your kindness has shaped a board culture where every voice feels heard. You've been responsible, you model responsibility not just in your decisions, but in your dedication to showing up, doing the work, and putting the students first. You have been learners, you've shown me that the best leaders never stop learning, whether it's from data, from parents, or from students like me. To me, that seems like an E for habits of learning. And so, as I depart the Oyster River School District, I leave you with one thought, one reminder, one ask. Never forget to keep the students at the center. Even as you keep your eye on the endless details of the budgets and bonds and buildings, never lose sight of the fact that everything you do matters because of the children you help and the communities you strengthen. For them, just as you have for me along my journey here with Oyster River, remain courageous and resolute. Or in other words, be brave, be bold, be Bobcat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, absolutely. Any board announcements?
The play was excellent, but I also want to note, the concerts have been excellent as well, both the high school orchestra and the middle school orchestra concerts have been great. I'm trying to remember, band was in there, but I always try to go out to all of them, and I'm always so impressed. Thank you.
Seconding Denise, I ended up seeing all those things, the Mamma Mia and with my kids, and then the, both the middle school and the high school orchestra. The high school orchestra one actually did have the band and the orchestra together, which was actually really cool to see, because I had never managed to see the band, because both of my kids are in orchestra, and that was quite enjoyable. I'm really happy that it was arranged that way, because I otherwise might not have made the time to do it, and so I liked that arrangement. But it's always impressive, particularly when you end up seeing the progress of kids starting from fifth grade and going all the way up to 12th grade, and it's amazing what the teachers are able to create in that from, I always find it remarkable, because there's no way I could teach kids to make any noise that didn't sound like something dying from a violin, so I have to appreciate all that, so thank you, everybody.
So I'm going to load onto the Mamma Mia bandwagon. It was amazing, and the way I know it was amazing is that my wiggly 10-year-old son was totally into it, and it was just lots of energy, super great, and the choreography was really great, and that was all done by Grace, the student choreographer, and I thought she just did a fantastic job. And those kids, kiddos were working on the stage really hard, and so it was, but it was really great. And then, good news for everybody else, there's at least one more concert. Bandapalooza is Thursday, the 29th at 6:00 PM at the Middle School Field. Bring your blankets, sit on the hill, and the Kona Ice Truck will be there, and it's sort of, I think it's the last, maybe the last concert of the year, so somebody will correct me, I'm sure, but, and it's, it's one of my favorites. It's super fun, the high school band will be there, all the middle school band grades, and they play like pops kind of music, so Jurassic Park and all Star Wars and kind of fun stuff, so that's it.
So just, you know, same kudos related to Mamma Mia cast and crew, and student director Caroline, and Mr. Eustace, front of the house, back of the house, parent volunteers was, was excellent. It takes a village to sort of put that type of production on, and it really showed how much time and effort went into it, so kudos to everybody there. But one other thing, just kind of staying on the music track a little bit, I just wanted to send a shout-out to the ORMS band strings and chorus team for going into the elementary schools, doing little, you know, kind of demonstrations to the rising fourth graders, or rising fifth graders, I should say, and then doing the instrument petting zoo. That's something that I experienced many, many years ago with my high schooler in the old middle school, and it was, everybody did their best there, but it was really, really tight. This time around, we were spread out all across this entire, you know, this room, the band room, the library, and it really gave the kids a great feel for an instrument and hopefully being able to kind of make a noise out of it that isn't, you know, too screechy or, so I think it gave them a really good feel for, and I appreciate the time and effort that folks dedicate to that, and, you know, letting all of us come in in the evening when, you know, they could be home with their families, too. So thank you so much to the team at ORMS for all of that.
And I will just, seventh, the Mamma Mia, it was fantastic. The concerts were amazing, the instrument petting zoo is excellent. I would just like to add thank you to Mr. Eustace. He's done a great job building that drama department at that school, and we are losing him to his next step in his career, and we just want to wish him good luck. I shouldn't have turned that off. We'll move on to district reports, the assistant superintendents.
Good evening. I'd like to invite Sean Peschel, who is our ELO coordinator for the district. He works from the high school, and he has brought some students to, for a student presentation. Mr. Peschel.
Is one of them doing an ITCT?
What's that? No. Okay. Hello. Thanks, Alexander. Go back in there. Again, thank you, Ms. Philippi, Dr. Scheps, and the school board. Sean Peschel, the Extended Learning Opportunities Coordinator at your Oyster River High School. Just a quick refresher and reminder is that our Oyster River theme this year is, our high school theme is creating impactful community connections. And so this evening, we have three of the students who presented at our last May faculty meeting with the highlight of their Career Technical, Career Technical Education Student Organization, so their CTSO. And so I'm going to have them introduce themselves and then explain how they have been impacted with their community around them.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jackie Rucker. I'm a senior here at the high school, and I've taken animal science for three years now. You see on this screen, I have a bunch of different pictures of the wonderful things I've been able to experience through this class, and in the middle is the three-ring model of what agricultural learning and agricultural education is. Starting with instruction, like I said, I've taken animal science for three years. I started my sophomore year in Animal Science 1, which is the introductory class in animal science, where I learned everything from animal care and husbandry, from large animals like cattle and equine, to small animals like companion animals, like dogs and cats, as well as exotics, as well as animal welfare. My junior year, I took Companion Animal Science, where I grew a deeper knowledge of companion animals, so again, those cats and dogs, as well as the exotics, so your reptiles, your rodents, your birds and things like that. My favorite thing that I learned from that was training. We did a lot with dogs, so I learned all of the different dog breeds, as well as nutrition, gestation periods, and developmental stages, and I actually clicker-trained a chicken. So I taught a chicken how to jump on command and play the piano, which, when I think of chickens, I think of the one from Awana with the coconut on its head, and you take it off and he screams, but they're actually really smart animals. So we used poker chips and color-coordinated them with foods and a clicker to teach them preparative- color-coordinated them with foods and a clicker to teach them repetitive, different tricks like jumping and playing the piano. And this year, I am taking honorary veterinary science, which is also a dual enrollment through Great Bay Community College. So, I am learning how to treat animals for different pathogens and diseases and illnesses and, excuse me, and things like how to restrain and administer medications and things like that. But I'm also learning the professional side of things, how to communicate with a client when you have to tell them information that they might not necessarily want to hear, and how to stay organized in a veterinary setting. The second part of this three-ring model is your SAE. This stands for Supervised Agricultural Experience. This is where you take the material that you've learned in class and apply it to an internship, or research, or something that you have done outside of school. So, my SAE is in Small Animal Care and Management. Two summers ago, I interned at the New Hampshire SPCA, where I learned about the basic care of animals and how a shelter runs, as well as how to administer medications subcutaneously and orally, and I learned how to draw blood. Last summer, I interned at Hero Pups, where we train service and therapy dogs for first responders and veterans. So, again, I was doing a lot of that day-to-day care, the feeding, the making sure that the dogs were physically and mentally stimulated. But I also learned a lot about training, which is when that clicker training with the chicken came in very handy. I currently am working at Hero Pups 12 hours a week throughout the school year. And the third part of this model is the FFA. The FFA stands for the Future Farmers of America. It is a national organization that spans every single state, and it kind of combines both of these things and creates competitions for students to show their knowledge. In the fall, I competed at the National FFA Convention for Horse Judging, where my team placed bronze. And this, two months ago, I competed at the FFA State Convention, where I placed gold in my outstanding SAE Placement Award. And I also got my state degree, which only 2% of FFA members receive, and I'm on track to receive my American degree next year. Hopefully, about only 1% of FFA members end up achieving that goal. And this has all been really important to me. It's something that means a lot to me, because if Mr. Peschel had asked me to do this last year or two years ago, I would have told him no. Public speaking is something that scares me. It's something that I've struggled with for a really long time. And being the vice president of the FFA chapter, I've had to do events like this. I've had to talk to people and explain to people what the FFA is, what animal science is. States like New Hampshire only have about 2,000 FFA members, where states like California have over 10,000 members. So, people in New Hampshire might look at me and be like, what is that? Whereas people in California or Kentucky, where agricultural is a bigger part of their culture, they understand it and they know it better. So, having to talk to people has really helped me grow my skills in public speaking and just maintaining a professional outlook. And yeah. Do I have any questions?
What surprised you through your multi-year journey? What was the most, in terms of your expectations, but through the experience, was probably the most enlightening in terms of what you didn't maybe expect and what you experienced?
Through the actual classes themselves, I wasn't expecting to learn as much about, like, larger animals. When I went into it as a sophomore, I was geared more towards companion animals. That's what I want to work with. I would love to be a shelter veterinarian. And so, in Animal Science 1, where I had to learn about the horses and the cows and your goats and things like that, it wasn't something that I thought I would find interesting, but I did end up really enjoying it. But as a whole, I think, again, my growth and my confidence skills has been something that I wasn't expecting to take away from this experience. As a CTE course, I take this class every single day instead of every other day. So, it is a huge part of my school life, and it's really helped me grow.
What song did you teach the chicken to play?
We attempted to teach them how to play, just like the sticks, I believe is what they call it. I don't play the piano. My partner did chopsticks, yeah. It kind of worked. If we had more time, they would have been more proficient at it, but.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing. We really appreciate it. And good luck.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Allison Dotchin. I am a junior at Oyster River High School, and I do a CTE program over in Rochester. And if the photos don't cue you in already, I take a teaching program. And during that teaching program, we work very frequently with little kids who are at the daycare built right across into our classroom. So, we are often in there with them. We divide into groups of four high schoolers, and we go in every day. A group of four of us will go in and work with the kids, and the goal was to get 30 hours overall. At the moment, I have 18, but I have also been doing a lot of other work outside of the school to get those hours up. So, I am at my 30 hours for working with the kids this year, and I'm very proud of myself for being able to achieve that. I also want to say that we've gone on multiple trips out to college. We went to a college, and we were introduced to a lot of concepts early in the year. We saw other teachers present things to us that we weren't gonna learn initially in our class. So, I think the first one I went to was about a classroom library. So, I learned the benefits of having those books in access and having those books switch out within an early learning center or in an early learning classroom specifically. I also learned a lot about just working with kids in general. And a lot of this stuff, I think, would be beneficial to just everyone who works in education. So, there's that. I think a lot of working with kids is the emotional learning and play, and it's just the most beautiful thing. And during one of those trips, we were tasked with either presenting a story or making, writing a story, and me and one of my fellow classmates who take the class, my classmate Maddie Toussaint, we wrote and illustrated a children's book, which the pictures that you can see are from within that children's book. And we spent a lot of time working on it together. And though we didn't place, I am proud to say that one of my fellow classmates did place with their projects, and I'm very proud of them for that. And yeah. I wish I had more to say and more to share, but honestly, I think just the working with kids and just, I think all of that I've learned has been just wonderful for me.
So, tell me again what grade levels, what ages the students you worked with?
So, at the moment, we're working with preschool-age kids, so like your 3 to 4 kids, like your early learning.
Are there other age groups that you're interested in kind of doing more with, or what's next?
Yeah. So, next year, I'm gonna be going into the second year of the program. And because I'm going into the second year, I will be interning with a teacher at a different district. I will be interning with, hopefully, if everything goes to plan, with the Barrington Elementary School art teacher, because my goal has always been, since I was little, to be an art teacher, specifically on the elementary school level.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
So, did you do the illustrations then?
Yes, I did the illustrations, and my partner in illustrating and writing the book did all the writing parts of it, so.
Those are really fabulous.
Thank you.
Can you give us a quick synopsis of your book?
So, the general summary is that it's Lilac's first day of school, and she's scared and doesn't know what to expect. And she, along her journey, makes friends of all different backgrounds, and her day goes well in the end.
That's really great. I'm just so amazed you illustrated an entire book. That is just really great. Have you had a chance to read it to the kiddos?
I did not get a chance to read it to the kids I work with, but I did get a chance to read it to my sister's Girl Scout troop. So, I did get a positive feedback from them, so.
This is a time when teachers are in short supply, and to see somebody getting really excited about it, like clearly you are, it's amazing. And so, thank you very much and good luck.
Yeah.
Hello, everyone. My name is Darwin Zhou, and I am a junior. I am currently taking the biomedical sciences year one program at Dover High School. All right. Thank you, Mr. Peschel.
Sure.
Biomedical sciences is, has a really wide range of topics. So, we've covered everything from immunology to autopsy reports. So, clearly a wide range of topics. And so, in the beginning of the year, we mostly focused on biomedical sciences. So, that autopsy report that I mentioned earlier, that was pretty much our first unit for a lot of the first semester. And we ended up working in groups to solve the fictional murder of, well, murder, I say, but that's really up to us in the end in our autopsy report. We were tasked with solving what killed a fellow student, Anna Garcia, a fake case. And that led into more of a focus on the human body and anatomy later on, which then included the regenerative sciences, which led to the BioTrek competition, which is the main competition of my biomedical one program. So, regenerative science includes a lot of things, and one of them is biofabrication and decellularization. So, one thing that we now have the ability to do is to take something like a organ in our bodies and completely remove all of, say, let's do a heart. We can completely remove the heart's own cells, but leave the structural, like the structural parts behind. So, you essentially have what you call like a ghost organ. So, it's completely wiped because all the cells are gone. And with that ghost organ, you can repopulate it with cells of your choice. So, one of the first videos we watched on this was someone who planted meat cells into a grape and therefore made a meat grape. It's a very strange video, but, and so, we eventually got to do this. We got to decellularize a spinach leaf, and we got to see it turn white over a few days. We experimented with the ingredients in our solution, so with soap, bleach, salt, sugar, to try and find the best solution for decellularization. And then, eventually, this moved on into what the BioTrek competition was, which is a competition where you and a partner, or you by yourself, aim to make a temp product, which is a technologically engineered medical product through either decellularization or 3D printing. So, it is essentially a fake organ almost. So, anything from lungs to a heart, your, our goal was to choose a problem that we wanted to solve and make a medically engineered product for it. So, we had everything from cystic fibrosis in the lungs to what my group did, which was liver cirrhosis or fibrosis in the livers. And our goal, again, was to make a functioning organ. I wish I had pictures, but unfortunately, it's all hypothetical. This is, I don't have anything, so. But we started off with, again, focusing on the problem, and then how, what type of cells we wanted to use. Did we want to use cells from the patient? Did we want to take cells from another person and convert it into stem cells again? We had to do a lot of business, actually, to figure out costs since, in the end, it was to make a viable product that we could potentially sell to hospitals or patients. So, there was actually a lot of business involved. But we had to decide what type of cells we wanted to use. We had to decide what media we wanted to use to grow and hopefully culture these cells. And we had to choose what structure we wanted. So, as I mentioned before, decellularization is one way, but another way is 3D printing. We now have the ability to 3D print structures and inject these cells into them to create new organs. This is still a growing field, but actually nearby in Manchester, the Army Program, ARMI, I don't know what it actually stands for, but they are the ones leading this in Manchester. And once we decided what to do with all the cells and whatnot, we had to come up with, again, the business model to hopefully sell these. And the, once all of the groups came up with their solution, we presented it to each other in each of our classes, and there was a winner for each of the classes. So, there are three biomedical classes, Biomed 2 and 2 Biomed 1 classes, and each of them competed amongst each other to have a winner, I'd say. And then, the winner of these classes would present against actual, would present to actual people from Army and BioFab USA, and they would be the judges between them. The winner of that would get to go to, I believe, DC to present again to a larger panel of judges. So, we did not win in my class, but we placed second. The person who won in my class created biofabricated ovaries to help perimenopause. And once we went to Manchester to present, the winner of the three classes was a biofabricated thyroid gland to help with thyroid issues and thyroid surgeries. So, overall, it was an amazing experience. I never thought I could do things like this in high school. In general, there's very minimal labs, but a lot of my biomed experience has been through labs. We've just finished, we're about to do a lab where we grow and culture bacteria to look at immunology. And it's just so amazing to learn that, like, we can do all this stuff now to help people. I think that's really it. Any questions?
So, you said, but I missed it a bit. So, your project was looking at growing a liver or helping, yeah, could you, could you say that again? Because you went through it, and I was like, that's super cool. Oh, wait, I lost it.
So, my group was focused on liver cirrhosis or cirrhosis in the liver, which is scarring in the liver caused by either alcohol or fatty liver disease and a myriad of other problems as well. Really, our initial idea was because the liver can regenerate by itself, if we could target just the scarred parts of the liver and then biofabricate and 3D print just that part of the liver to give to the patient, it could save them a lot of money, because that's like the main goal with biofabrication, is that you no longer need a human donor, or you don't need someone to die or to give parts of their liver. So, there is, I believe, 11,000 people on the liver waiting list right now. And unfortunately, like 2,000 of those people die because there's not enough livers in circulation and being donated. So, that was the whole point of this. So, our goal was to solve liver cirrhosis and by 3D printing a liver.
That sounds amazing, that you can deconstruct a sick organ and then regrow it into a healthy organ. That's incredible. And thank you very much for sharing with us. I appreciate it. Good luck.
Just want to quickly highlight, too, there's some other names on the list on the screen in front of you also. We had 11 students, actually, who were competing in their competitions connected to their career technical organization. And, you know, even though they're representing Dover or somewhere with the Rochester, they're truly our Oyster River students, too. So, we celebrate them in our, celebrate them in our district also. I'm gonna try to do my best for the last group there, technology, electrical technology, electricians. We had four students that went off, competed on March 14th. It was Professional Development Day for us, but they went over to Manchester Community College for the Skills USA competition. And out of that competition, we did have Travis Fall, who is a senior, so he only got to do one year of electrical. But he competed. He won first in the state. And for winning first in the state, he received a $5,000 tuition waiver to the Community College System of New Hampshire. He received a $500 worth of tools, and he was also offered four to five job opportunities.
Wow.
Beyond that, he has now, he has now accepted a position to work for Alpha Electric, so he'll be graduating, going right off to the workforce. And because he won first in New Hampshire, he now goes off to Nationals. So, Nationals for, will be taking place down in Atlanta, and that is being paid, all expenses paid through sponsorship from different electrical companies in the area. When he goes to compete down there, there's gonna be a high school and a college division, so it'll be in the high school version of this. I think Jackie had mentioned the idea of FFA at the college level, too. So, not only do we have the high school level, but also college levels of these experiences, too. And again, when he goes off to Nationals, he'll be receiving, he'll be flying down with no tools, but every tool that he uses, anything he touches is, becomes his, and that all flies back with him. So, he'll be gaining more tools and stuff from down there. So, pretty cool. So, yeah, so that's what's kind of going on there. So, again, we just want to highlight those student, Travis also, and also the other students that are listed on the screen there for you, too. For those of you who know me, I'm also a data person, not really like sharing data. I'm not much of a data data. I'm not much of a data person, but I like sharing it at least. So, projection for next year, career technical, career technical education for '25, '26. We had 167 students apply this year to go on to career tech next year. Out of that 167, 17 withdrew their application. And I, that happens every year because I tell students during the course selection process, if you have 1% interest in career tech, put the application in. Because it's much easier to pull your application out between February and September than it is to try to get an application entered in later on. So, we had 17 students withdraw for whatever reason. So, it leaves us with 150 students that were being reviewed. Out of the 150, 128 have been accepted to the programs next year. And there's 22 students who are currently on a waitlist. In the spirit of Dr. Morris, back in the day, he'd always ask like, well, what programs are being waitlisted in? Should we have that program in Oyster River? So, there are, out of those 22 students, that's being affected by four programs. So, auto technology, health science, sports med, and criminal justice. Those are the ones that we're waiting for to hopefully get some movement. All the schools, our school included, are currently building our master schedules. Once the master schedules are built, we then load the students in there. Then, at that point in time, we'll have some open seats opening up that all kids will get into their program that they wanted to get. So, we're hoping that when Dover and Somersworth and Rochester build their schedules, some of those students get unfortunately not placed, then we can make room for our students to move in. And again, the waitlisting, it's always a moving target, always a moving, moving topic. Just because an Oyster River student says, "I don't want to go," doesn't mean another Oyster River student is next put into the, into the spot. It's a waitlisted that's ranked the students that are waitlisted. So, yeah, so currently on par, we have 128 students that are looking to go with hopefully 22 more to be added. And I had an earlier conversation with, with Amy, and the money tree looks good for CTE next year. So, that's good. Thank you very much for watering that and fertilizing it as much as you can. Also, some other highlights for you too. Back on May 12th, we had 13 Oyster River students took their New Hampshire LNA exam through the health science program over at Dover. And all of them were told verbally, so not, so informally, but verbally told that they have all passed their LNA exam. So, it's officially not in paper yet, but verbally in the experience, they were told they passed. So, that's pretty good stuff there. And then lastly, for the class of '24, during this, this current school year, the class of '25, we're going to be having 20 students that are completers, are considered completers. And out of those 26 of them are going to be graduating also with the National Technical Honor Society designation and being accepted to that honor society too. So, a little bit about career tech education. Anything else that you'd like to hear? Yes. I went a little fast, I'm sorry, Heather, I went fast. I tried slowing down. I know. Yes, question?
Because my brain can't process as fast as your mouth can, what were the four? I got auto technology and sports science. Did I even get two of them right?
Sure, sure. So, auto tech, health science, sports medicine, and criminal justice.
I just had a quick question. This is the third year, I think, in a row, Sean, that we've seen an upward trend on CTE applications. Correct participation?
Yep. Now, it's not because of me, but over the eight years of being here, we've had growth over each year. This was, this year, it seems like an exponential growth though compared to other years. So, and again, I flashback to when I was maybe my third or fourth year working here. I had a parent of a fourth grader calling me saying, "How do I get my kid into career tech?" And I said, "Well, pass fifth grade through eighth grade first, do their sophomore, freshman year, and then we can look at it to come their sophomore year." So, I think we're maybe hitting those, those fourth graders are now the ones that are applying maybe potentially. So, those then fourth graders, but now high schoolers.
Sean, I don't know if you're, and I don't mean to be unfair in this question, but I believe that our numbers were below 50 when I, when I, when we started together. So, we're seeing a huge increase.
It's like about maybe, I want to say, for some reason, 18 pops out in my head or 25 students were participating.
I feel like it was very, very low. So, thank you for the work that, that you've done.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to do it. Yes.
So, for some of those, it seems like it's pretty competitive in order to kind of get into the, the programs. And I know we partner with Rochester, Barrington, Dover.
So, yeah, so the centers are Somersworth, Dover, and Rochester. Out of those three centers, the region includes, Oyster River as a sending school, Newt High School up in Milton, New Hampshire, they send down. And then some of this, some of the centers or some of the schools have side agreements. So, for example, Dover has an agreement with Marshwood. Marshwood is over in Maine. They, their regional tech center is in Sanford. And so, there's some programs that we offer in our region that they don't have in their region. So, there are some Maine students kind of coming over. I believe over in Somersworth, they may still have an agreement with Noble High School that have some students coming over. It's also open to homeschool students in our region. So, if anybody is a homeschool student in Oyster River, they could, they can apply in and so on and so forth. Also, Somersworth also has an agreement with Tri-City Christian Academy too, to have students coming in. So, the seats are competitive just because of the popularity of CTE. You may have heard just, or may have realized from hearing their presentations, it's not just spinning wrenches in auto or, you know, putting some, some paint on a wall for paint for, you know, interior design, whatever it is. So, they are becoming more and more career technical focused rather than that vocational focus of the past.
Right. Are those other areas seeing similar growth interests?
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of exploding in the state of New Hampshire, which is, which is nice. It's have happened. But then again, too, just for, for your knowledge, Kelly, and for others, is that, I think Damon had mentioned, there's two levels of the first year course, or two sections of the first year course, and only one section of the second year course. So, a teacher at those schools have block scheduling. Out of the four blocks, they only teach three out of the four because the fourth is their planning period. So, an ideal situation would be two sections of year one and one section of year two. Just to use simple math for you guys, there might be 20 students in each section of year one, so that's 40 students, that are all just vying for 20 seats in year two. Just because you're in year one does not mean you're going to be getting back into year two. And so, we are looking at alternative opportunities for those students that don't get in. For example, I had a student last year who finished year one of welding, great solid, great grades, solid attendance, so on and so forth, ideal candidate to move on to year two. Unfortunately, the numbers didn't work out that he was unable to move on to year two. And then working with Ms. Noe and then Dr. Shapps and Dr. Morris at the same time also, we were able to find that Great Bay Community College offers a three-course welding certificate program. And so, by taking the Dover program two years, those two years equal only the one first course of those three courses. And so, we were able, once again, went to the money tree with Amy, and we were able to fund these two students actually, that student that wasn't able to get in and also a student who had an interest and passion for welding. We have now paid for year one, or course one, two, and three, and they'll be getting certified with that welding certificate upon graduation. One of the cool things too is that with the early college program, you can get two free per year. That's happening in the state of New Hampshire last year, this year, and moving into next year and hopefully and beyond. So, that cost was reduced greatly because of the fact of the early college program that's taking place with the scholarships and so on and so forth. It's cool because they're actually getting all, they're getting three free classes because they're still enrolled in high school in May, and that's when the course begins for year three, or course three. And so, because they're still in high school, it's free, but it's in the calendar year for college in summer, the next calendar, but we're running it because the way it works and operates, which is kind of fun.
That's great.
Yeah, so currently looking at Great Bay and partnering with them for other certificate programs too. Other ones that are out there are automotive certificate, they've got a biotech certificate, and they have a homeland security certificate. So, just kind of seeing if we can offer other opportunities very similar to the welding one. So, we're still in beginning conversations of that. So, we'll put it in the notes, yeah, Ms. Laird, but we're looking at, looking into those programs, those certifications.
I just want to highlight the communication with Sean and Ms. Noe and Amy, just because there's, there is a little bit of misalignment around the process of the numbers of students interested in our budgeting process. So, making sure that as the interest grows, that we can accommodate as many students as possible. So, thank you for the communication. Also, we had an opportunity to meet with President Great Bay and just really understand a lot of the logistics or the misalignments around opportunities for students to take more courses and promise to meet continually in partnership as well to make sure that the, I would say, the roadblocks or potential obstacles are minimized through this entire process. So, thank you.
Thank you, definitely. And thank you for your support also. Yes.
I'm just curious if, and I know you, you do so much, I have so much on your plate, but do you have any information in terms of how students do once they leave, graduate in terms of jobs that they do get? I mean, it sounds like it's real positive, but I was just curious if you had any statistics on that.
It's a good question. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't follow or track that. So, it is an area that I want to improve upon and kind of following our students after they graduate, seeing if they do continue on their career pathway or not, or what have you. So, yeah, I don't have that with me right now, but it's something I'm hoping to get under my data belt at some point in time. And I think when I, just a side note too, when I was talking with our faculty introducing our students here, I like, I try to work in the, in the focus and mindset that we're going from passion to profession, that these students had an interest or a passion for their field. And now hopefully, over the time, they'll make that passion again turn into a profession. So, pretty cool stuff happening. Yes, Gianna?
This is just, it made me think about it when you were talking about the, sometimes not having enough room in year two. It almost sounds like that an ELO might be able to work with that way. So, that's kind of like the, the Great Bay thing was.
Yeah.
So, I'm glad that we, you're also working on ELOs to do that. And actually, that made me think, I know that we're talking about CTEs, but offhand, do you happen to know the numbers of students who participated in ELOs this year?
For the current school year, we have 76 students that are either actively, that were actively engaged or have completed their ELO this year. And that, out of those 76, there's going to be, there are a few that are going to be rolling it over into the summertime or rolling it over into the fall. One of the benefits of the ELOs is that the variable of time is erased. It's all competency based. So, the student is able to kind of move at their pace when ready. If they need to put on pause because traditional courses get heavier or busier or life gets hectic, which all hap, we all know happens, that's totally fine for the ELO to take the back burner. However, sometimes though, the traditional courses take the back burner and the ELO keeps trudging forward. Why? Because the students are passionate about it and interested in that area. So, yeah, right now, we're kind of the, the buzzing time of the seniors trying to get their ELOs wrapped up and presenting and so on and so forth. And it's been amazing kind of hearing and seeing what they, what they presented and what they've, what they've done. Thank you very much for your time.
Just real quick, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say thank you to Dowan, Jacqueline, and Allison. Nice. Yes. That was my CTEs, remember her names. It's important, it's a great program, and it's important for students like you to come share their successes so that other students can see that and feel motivated and empowered to take that step. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Well, I am excited to be here to talk a little bit about the cell phones and learning study group that we had. This group came from our wellness committee. So, the core of the group started with wellness committee and then I, and then it kind of grew a little bit. So, we, we are going to present today, but I just want to make sure everybody realizes that the group was much larger than the four of us. And I did include all of the members of the group in the slides. And I want to just thank Kelly, Ickies, Dr. Shapps, and Becca, and Bill. Shannon Kirin was a part of the committee. She did a lot of work at the high school level. Mike McCann and Kristen Perrin, the assistant principals at the high school. Alita Carter, who is an assistant principal at the middle school. Kim Felch, who's a counselor at the middle school. Felicia, who's the school psychologist. Kat Riley, who is one of the nurses. And then also Deb Curran as parent. So, I just want to thank everybody for participating in this work. It was, we started in December and we engaged in a variety of different conversations. We did some learning together. So, we spent a lot of time reading and learning about cell phones and learning and students as well as the classroom. And then we took all that information in, had conversations around our policies and our practices. The high school gathered some information around, they surveyed the student population and parents and faculty, which Becca will talk a little bit about. And then we also came back around to talk, to have some recommendations, which we have for, for all of you, as we know that this is part of your school board goals. Felicia?
Hi. I get to talk to you guys about the research we did. So, we did a pretty good lit review of the research out there. And the one thing we found is that the research is emerging around cell phones and it is very much a hot topic, obviously, for lots of reasons. A lot of the research out there was, of course, is ongoing research around screens and how screens impact kids. And we were focusing on the impact of cell phones. So, most of the research that out there is correlational, which means we can talk about impact and suggestion of how it's impacting these, but there's nothing that's showing that it's a direct impact on things. So, one of the, most of the research out there is done on college students because they are a, a group that's, you know, a confined group that we can, that researchers can hold and take, you know, do research with. Proximity of the device has been a big part of research. Having the device on you, having it close to you. And a lot of the research was looking at distractibility issues around it. One of the things was when folks have the device with them, it's distractible to interactions, face-to-face interactions that we saw. One of the things we were looking at is research around whether it impacted actual academic performance. That's probably where there's the least amount of research that we found. But we did see that they did, there was some that showed there was a decrease in performance or impacted, but it was mostly in margin, learners who were already struggling. We didn't see any, find any research that talked about students who were doing well and it's showing a negative impact on them. The FOMO is real. They've actually shown research about that, the fear of missing out. So, when folks don't have the device with them, they're worried about what they're missing out on. They worry about missing out on those alerts, those, you know, when you don't, when you have your phone there and it's the, you're getting the alerts and you're not able to attend to it, you're worried about what you're missing out on. So, a lot is, a lot of the research is looking at that right now. The chart that you guys see up there is one of the, it's actually been reproduced in lots of different publications and stuff. And this one was particularly as a school psych, this one was pretty meaningful for me when I came upon it in that the idea that there's research being looked at, the actual impact on cognitive capacity. And so, the idea that they took, they had the cell phone where it was right next to the person, it was in a, in a bag, contained in a bag in the same room, and then one that was actually removed. And first, one of the things they did is asked people, did they miss their phone? And did they think not having their phone had any impact on their actual performance on some task? And they said, "No," that it didn't have any, you know, impact on that. And then they actually did task one on a working memory task and then actually a cognitive task. It's a Raven Matrixes task where they're actually having to do an actual task. And then it showed that it did have an impact on it and that when the phone was either with them or in a bag, it actually impacted their working memory and also their cognitive capacity. And when it was removed, totally removed, it didn't have, it didn't have as much impact because it was out of, kind of out of sight, out of mind. But when it was there, the idea of getting those notifications or again, that fear of missing out did have. So, that's one of the beginning stages of research. So, that's a concern about having the phone nearby and that impact of worrying about, even when it's not. There actually was a follow-up study done where they actually had a fake phone. And they showed the, the participants that it's actually fake and it still had similar results that, and that phantom buzzing that you might, you don't have your phone on and you feel like it's been buzzing, that researcher's showing that too. That's showing how much that capacity, how much it's interfering with your cognitive capacity than you're thinking about your phone being there. So, when we're talking about adolescents, we're thinking there's one, the device, but then also the impact of what that device brings to kids. And so, social media is a part of the issue, right? So, having the phone is one thing, but what does that give us access? There are positive pieces of having a phone, you know, it brings community connection, positive information. There are learning, there are reasons to have the phone for learning opportunities as well. But there are other pieces, other parts of what access that phone gives that could be a problem. The wellness lab looked at, the thing to think about is 94% of adolescents have a phone, and that's across all socioeconomic status. So, that's really important to remember that. So, 94% of adolescents are having phones. The range of how much kids report to be on phones is four and a half hours to eight hours a day, with the average being about five hours a day that they're on a phone. And then kids themselves are reporting that, you know, 26% report being addicted to their phone, that they can't do without having their phone, that they worry about it when they don't have it, they worry about again, missing out, not having those notifications. The surgeon general has done, oops, sorry, I should change the, there we go. Surgeon general has talked, has talked about that 95% of 13 to 17-year-olds use social media. So, you've got 94% of adolescents on smartphone, 90% of youth using some form of social media platform. And so, again, that's that information coming in for them. And a third report using social media almost constantly. So, it would mean that when they're on their phone, they're on that social media getting. So, it's not like they're on their phone making phone calls or just talking to mom and dad, right? We know that Surgeon General, there's been other research done where we know that being on phones has impacted sleep quality, which concerns there is to physical health, but we also know that there's profound impact on mental health. And that's the concern when we get into the cell phones and social media, and then that impact that it can have on adolescents' mental health. And so, cell phones use is being connected to social media is the biggest concern. 51% of adolescents report using social media for about four hours a day. So, then, we're seeing connections, again, it's all correlation, but increased rates of anxiety and depression and being exposed to harmful content. Now, we've known that being exposed to harmful content, this came back, you know, we've been researching, doing research around the impact of information for children from TV times, right? If kids witness harmful events on TV or watch violence, do they become violent? We know that's correlational research because not everybody that's exposed to it has experienced this trauma or has an impact. So, it's important to look at this, that it's correlational, but there are impacts noted, right? Nine out of 10 public schools are reporting cyberbullying associated with social emotional distress, depression, suicide ideation. And then, the big piece is that, this is a really sensitive time, 10 to 19 years old, is that brain development, right? Our brains start developing from the time we are born and don't reach maturation until they're 25. There's a huge developmental growth from birth to three, and then again during those adolescent years. And we do know that exposure to screens does change the architecture of the brain, and so that information, so the screen is, the phone is a screen, so that does have impact. Plus, you take into adolescents, the impact of risky behaviors, the influence of social pressure, peer opinions, and then with a cellphone and the social media impact. So, the idea of being able to teach kids how to manage that, and how the impact of that phones and that information coming in during a school day, I think is an important thing for us to be looking at. Like I said, there's positive parts to the cellphone, but then there's also some research that definitely shows that there could be potential for harm, but also that we need to take a look at how we can help and teach kids how to appropriate use things and regulate. Any questions?
I think it's you, I think it's Danny.
Okay. Yes? Yes? Okay. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the range of what we see within school districts. And we know that there are 15 states that have state laws that are related to this. And if you, this is an interactive map. If you're interested in more information about this, there's a way that you can go in and see what they are, but I'm not going to go into great detail related to this. I am going to talk about New Hampshire separately. New Hampshire has, as Lauren mentioned earlier, there are a few bills that are being, that have been introduced, and they're all about cell phones, but they're all different. So, there's HB 781, and that bill talks about school boards putting into practice a policy to govern students' use of cell phones. And then, it allocates some, there's an appropriation of funds to support school districts through grants to be able to reimburse them for different items that they may need to be able to put this policy into place as far as restricting use. Then, the Senate bill is a little bit different. It completely says that it is prohibited, school devices are completely prohibited from students during the school day, and it needs to be implemented school-wide. And there's no allocation or appropriation of funds associated with that. And then, House Bill 2, there is a piece of it that actually talks about cell phones, and it's a little bit of both of these, where In-House Bill 2, it actually says that there will be a policy that prohibits devices to be used during the school day and implemented school-wide. So, this would prohibit any use of the device, so that's similar to the Senate bill. And then, at the end, it does say that there will be, they will establish a cellphone use policy grant program without any funds associated with that. So, they didn't say how much it would be, but there is something in the language that says that there would be a grant program to be administered by the Department of Education. So, it's a little bit of both. So, we anticipate that there will be some type of law that will go through, whether it's the Senate bill, the House bill, or HB 2, there's going to be something that looks like that. There are, we have procedures and guidelines in place, so we already have a cellphone policy. And so, if the House bill is what is passed, where we just need to, the school boards need to make sure that they have a policy in place related to cell phones, we are, we're all set with that. It's only if it changes to the Senate bill that we would have to relook at that.
Suzanne.
Denise, yes.
Just curious, do they make any exceptions for students with special needs and medical and that sort of thing?
All of the cellphone, all of the laws that are being introduced, they all have exceptions for students that have disabilities or that need them for any reason, medical reason and other reasons, yes. And our own policy has that in place as well. And we've worked closely with Catherine on that at the school building level to make sure that any procedures that are being enacted within the school buildings, that those exceptions are absolutely a part of them. Does anyone have any other questions about that?
Just a clarification, when they say device, are they talking about student personal laptops also?
No, they are not.
Oh, they are?
For which one? Because it says, oh, it might be. So, the House bill says cellphone, and then the Senate bill says personal device. So, there's, again, there's a variation. If the Senate bill goes through, we'll have to revisit.
The House Bill 2 is the one that you're talking about?
Yeah, no, House Bill 781.
That's, okay.
There's House Bill 781, there's Senate Bill 206, and then HB 2 is separate, it's different, it's part of the budget.
Yeah.
That has different language. It's a little bit of a combination of both.
Okay, thank you.
And there are other districts, there are other school districts in the area that have policies, but there are a lot that do not around cell phones.
All right. So, we're just going to go over the different guidelines we have in our two buildings. Well, I guess all four buildings. I've spoken with David and Misty from the elementary schools, and these are, you know, our guidelines are pretty simple in our schools. Really, no personal electronic devices. We obviously have district-issued laptops or iPads that the kids use, but our students' personal electronic devices are not allowed. So, they are, kids can have them when they get to school, on the buses, they're okay, as long as they're being used appropriately. When they get to school and walk through our doors, though, they need to be off. And they need to be put away, placed in a backpack or a cubby. And when, at 3:00, in our school, at 3:00, when the bell rings, kids can get back, get back on their phones, work on, you know, afternoon plans, meeting up, getting notes from parents, things like that. And smartwatches and AirPods and all those other things need to be put away. And if they're, right now, you know, we haven't had many problems with smartphones, smartwatches, but they definitely, if they become a distraction, that's when we get involved. But they've, kids have been pretty good with them, I have to say. They do a good job because they don't want to lose that, you know, the chance to have them. If they become a distraction, that's when, you know, teachers get involved. But yeah, that's the elementary schools and middle school.
And then, for the high school, so last year is when we first started to implement voluntary by teacher to have cellphone, the phone zones that we're using. Then this year, it was an all-school initiative. And really, that came from research that it doesn't work unless everybody's doing it, meaning every teacher in the building, because then it's not one classroom, a teacher versus another with the kids arguing that somebody lets them. So, we put that in place at the beginning of the year. And so, if kids have their phone, it's supposed to go in the phone zone. And really, with teachers, we did not want them arguing with students in the classroom. It's a reminder at the beginning of class, and then if they see the phone out during class, they get a referral to the office. And it doesn't mean they have to go up and say something to the kid in the moment, but they let them know they referred them by the end of class, and then they're called down. So, they're not sent out of the classroom, there's not an argument in the classroom. It was not meant to be set up so that it was kid versus teacher. We wanted to take that piece out of it. The assistant principals then will call the student down, they'll talk to them, why did you have your phone, what was going on? And then, if it's found that the kid or the student shouldn't have had their phone, then it is taken away for five days. Parents are called, they come to school, they have to drop it off at the main office. We have not had as much of that as I actually anticipated. There has been some, and then throughout the school year, but I thought there would be a lot more of that, and there wasn't. I will say that we had kind of a refresh when the semester started, and just a reminder that this is all means all and that we're all doing this. And then, I think with May and spring and senioritis and a couple other things, there's some refreshers that we need to do. But overall, it's been going very well for the course of the year, and teachers have. So, on the high school survey, we surveyed students, we surveyed parents, and we surveyed faculty. And so, students and parents, parents felt they were pretty informed. 93% of parents agree it's important to limit cell phones during the class for academics. Some parents did notice improved school engagement with school and improved mental well-being and less stress for students. Some students reported improved focus and engagement and improved academic performance. I will say, we had more positive comments from students, actually, as the year went on. And I think as we moved into the spring, when they were asked either by teachers or in conversations, more and more students would say it actually wasn't as bad as they thought it was going to be, and they could actually tell that they did pay more attention, that they're in classes and with the work that they were doing. The one thing, students are looking for more flexibility when they're not in academic courses, so really, what they mentioned was advisory and flex. And so, because the rule we have in the building is if you're in an academic space, the phone goes in the phone zone. And advisory is a specific program where we're building community, and so, when it was working in advisories and they're not having phones, a lot of students reported a lot more connectivity with that small group and with their advisor. And then, flex is specifically for academic work, whether it's doing homework, whether it's meeting with a teacher, whether it's reassessment. And so, those were two areas that we will look at, as we're always going over procedures and looking at how implementation is going. But those were our considered academic times for this year, and we weren't going to change anything in the first year either. We wanted to see how it went for the entire year. For faculty and staff, they were 100% supportive. What they found last year is a lot of it was a push-pull with students if it wasn't an all-means-all. And so, when everybody was implementing it, it was a lot easier on teachers, when it didn't have to be an argument in the classroom. That was a lot easier on teachers also. Some of the observations from teachers was improved student behavior, improved focus and engagement in the classroom, and we actually had responses without asking from teachers in the first three days of school. And it was just the fact they were commenting on eye contact, they were commenting on conversations in the classroom. And actually, they were commenting on, they really thought because kids can have their phones in the hallways in passing time, and they can have them at lunch, they really thought they would see at lunch everybody on their phones. In last year, more kids were on their phones, even at a table of eight or nine kids. This year, they're not. They have phones, they'll get on them for a second, they'll do something, but then they're engaging with their friends in person. And so, that I actually watched purposefully to see what would happen when they were allowed on their phones, and I was really impressed with our kids that they were using them more as a tool. They weren't using them as something that they had missed out on all this stuff and had to be on them every minute of their 30-minute lunch. So, that was impressive. So, improved social interactions, reduced distractions in the school setting, and they increased the time they actually spent on academics because they couldn't be on their phones in study halls or flex or advisory. So, those are just, those are some of the things that we did notice and that came out in the survey. I think, do you have any questions for me? I'm trying to get my index card without changing the slides.
I do actually have one question, and this is for both of you. This year's freshmen are the first class to come through with that middle school cellphone policy of no phones in the school? Or is it?
Is that a question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how many classes at the high school have been and went through five through eighth with no phones at all.
Yeah, I'm trying to think that through.
Or is it this year's eighth graders that are the first?
We've had it for a little while.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we've had it, I want to, I mean, I can't remember us having, I mean, really, when we went one-to-one, that was when we really put the cell phones away.
Okay.
Before, it was almost, hey, if you've got it, it's a, you know, it's a mini-computer. We didn't have, kids all didn't have access. So, once we went one-to-one, and we were, I think, the first school to do it. So, we've been.
I believe it's one more cohort will go through, current eighth grade, then that's all they'll know, correct?
Say that again, Mo.
I think it's one more year left before it's, that's all they know, no phones in the school.
Oh, yeah, okay, one more year. That makes sense. I mean, I feel like it's been seven years, eight years.
Yeah, okay.
Been a while.
Thank you.
Do you want to add, I mean, one of the things kids have talked about is preparing for college, like when the seniors, like I think this was harder for the seniors who had been able to use their phone at the beginning of the year. And so, one of the things that they've talked about is wanting to be prepared for college and being able to use their phones, and whether they can put them or they can't put them away. And so, part of it really is self-management. And so, we are teaching them, in an academic setting, the appropriate thing to do is put the phone away. When I'm in a meeting, my phone is in my purse or away, I'm not looking at it even if I know it's buzzing, right? But for kids, they have to practice that piece. But then, being able to have their phone back and manage their own time. So, that is something that, it's a skill that they need, that we feel that we are helping them practice with that piece by doing it this way. That is where I do disagree with them putting a law in place that every school, you have to ban these 100% because kids are on them those four or five hours a day. So, if it's going to be before school, it's going to be after school, and then they're not going to be doing, it's getting in the way of sports, it's getting in the way of academics. So, I do think we have found a really happy medium, they might not be a happy 100% of the time, but where they can practice skills they need now and in the future, and we can help them do that.
I think it came up in our conversations, this idea of gradual release, like how for seniors, as Becca has mentioned, Felicia, we were talking about this, you know, instead of just removing this and then trying to break that, how do we give them the independence, as you suggest, before they leave us, to be able to go off independently and manage that? So, it just can't be about something that is removed, it's building the skill set, as you suggest, where they become, there's a balance to how they manage themselves once they leave us.
And one of our seniors had an idea earlier this year, I think it was probably near the end of the third quarter, middle of the third quarter. So, flex, they're supposed to be signed up somewhere. And so, one of the ideas was they wanted to be able to go into the senior corps, which is a place they can use their phone, if they didn't need to use flex academically. And so, I met with a group of seniors, we talked about how that could work and what would, you know, how to use that time in that space. And so, we actually did implement that, and that became like another senior privilege that they have in the building, and that came from Student Voice. But it's also when they actually are not signed up for flex from a teacher, they can sign out from their advisory and they can go to the corps and hang out together. But if they have something academic they're supposed to do, they're supposed to be in flex. They've been really good about it.
So, the recommendations we have from the committees to continue our current practices, the, both the elementary and middle schools, so Bill, Misty, and David, they've been looking at the procedures that they have and making sure that they apply. And I know Becca just mentioned, they'll be looking at it every year, so I think we need to continue to assess our procedures and determine if we need to make adjustments or, and I do think that we also need to make sure that the policies, ensure that the policies are being reviewed regularly and updated regularly, which the policy committee does do. So, I think that from the research that, and the learning that we have done, and from all of the information that's been provided through the survey, and from Misty, David, Bill, and Becca and their teams, I think that we're doing, really, we've done a good job as a district to make sure that kids are not using their cell phones too much and that now they are using them appropriately within the academic setting. I don't know if anyone has any questions for us?
I don't really have questions so much as I have a comment, is that the feedback that both Noe and Dr. Shapps were giving about the usefulness of this being a learning exercise in order to learn going into the future out of high school, in order to self-regulate with the phones, to me is actually a pretty pivotal article, argument, because I'm not in favor of the complete removal of the cell phones largely for that reason. And another one would be some aspects of safety. And I think it'd be extremely helpful if the administration would mention these things to the legislatures, because under reconciliation, we could be losing the flexibility within the school district to make our own choices regarding it. And I'm quite concerned about that because I think that could be problematic in a different way. So, that's just my comment as opposed to a question. It was, you guys, such a good presentation, you should do it in Congress.
Any other questions?
I just want to remind, this was a goal, as part of the school board's goal, and I think the model of using the wellness committee as critical friends, kind of, how do we look into something that is connected to a board goal and then come back is certainly good use for our time. I think the committee did a great job in starting with looking at the research, really kind of honing in. kind of honing in and trying to define, and then looking at data and really looking within the system to kind of corroborate or in some ways kind of build themes about understanding based on real experience. So I appreciate the opportunity to do this and we're glad we got to report out before the end of the year. So thanks to the committee, everybody who did a lot of good work.
And thank you all who presented, I appreciate it. We appreciate it. Oh, please, yeah.
So kind of piggybacking in a different way on Gianna's question. So a lot of this research and the survey results and all of this that we've reported out here, are we reporting that back to the students? Because one thing, it would help me as a mom to be better armed if they're hearing it from multiple places and not just their mom who's doom and gloom and it's not going to rot my brain.
That's a great question and we haven't talked about that, but I definitely think it's something that the leadership team should talk about. Absolutely.
I also, we talked also about, I'd love to talk parents more about it too, because I think that's also the piece that parents don't understand about all the, not just the research, but the practicality pieces of it too. So I do think like explaining to the students why this is a good thing we're doing, I think a lot of times we forget to tell the why. So I think it would be a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, leading into, segueing off of that, one of the things I thought, actually another thing that'd be good to share with the students was actually the difference of those studies is saying about whether or not it's in your pocket across the room or completely out of the room. Because I think that's a really good argument to be giving to kids for their own behavior. And just as a completely anecdotal thing, I've done that experimentation with my own kids and have determined absolutely the best thing to do is when you're doing homework, I learned that the cell phone cannot be in the same room. So the fact that my anecdote is being justified by actual research is quite interesting. And I think a lot of parents could benefit from actually having the information disseminated to them because then it becomes less of a parent-child argument and evidence would be a good...
...that as well, of course.
Yeah, excellent point.
I'd bet a good chunk of money it would help improve my performance in every area. Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
So my last report, I know, I know this has been long today for me, is just in your backup, you have a memo regarding our decision for the piloting of two programs. We had 24 teachers, specialists, members of the leadership team. There were 24 of us that engaged in the committee work around identifying two programs to pilot for the K-5 ELA program. It was a lot of work and I just want to, they are all mentioned, everyone is mentioned in the memo. I just want to thank everyone who participated in that committee. We have now done the work where we've identified Benchmark Advance and CKLA as the two programs that we are going to pilot next year. We are working right now, the steering committee, which consists of the literacy specialists and the principals and I, we're working on the details of what that pilot's going to look like. And I've put a call out to K-5 teachers to identify some teachers that might be interested in piloting. The teachers will pilot both, so if someone wants to pilot, be a part of the experience, they will do both programs. And we will then, from that, that'll happen all year next year. And then from that, we will identify one program that the teachers and the specialists and leadership and everybody feels most comfortable with, and we will bring that back to the school board. Does anyone have any questions for me? Heather?
That's not actually a question, but the titles Benchmark Advance and CKLA, it's like, could you, the titles are like, I have no idea what this is. Like, sure, okay, it's a great ELA program.
So what I can do, if you would like, is I can send you links and give you some basic information about the programs to give you the highlights. And honestly, their websites are extremely robust. So you can find a lot of information, you can find their scope and sequence, you can find all kinds of information on their websites, but I'm happy to provide some additional information if you would like.
I can Google even without the AI help.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Dr. Shapps?
Thank you. I think to start off my report and I'll try to be concise, I think the hearing about, just the accolades about all the events of the last several weeks, I felt I've been on perpetual roller skates from our orchestra jazz performances to certainly high school, middle school, to Mamma Mia, to, I had the opportunity last week to be one of two keynote speakers to launch the Middle School Service Palooza event. It's been exciting and exhausting to try to be everywhere at the same time. And I think it's a testament, other than the challenge of finding parking in the evening or anytime, just everything that's happening across the school system. One of the highlights for the last two weeks was participate in two elementary classroom science symposium events. One, looking at Mohammed, at a beech tree disease that our students had really kind of recognized, working with a local forester about the cause of the facts and all of that and Massway as well in terms of the study of clouds and part of the globe symposium. So just a lot of connections to authentic learning and just seeing the expertise of our students and speaking, what I would say, the vocabulary of scientists was just exciting as well. We notified incoming kindergarten parents of their school assignment for next year. And I just want to mention that the work of the policy committee and shaping that policy went a long way in terms of providing some guidance of our decision-making and in terms of how we ended up, what I would say, ensuring the functional capacity of our elementary schools based on our numbers. And more to update as we go along, but I just wanted to mention that as well. So I want to say that I'm going to maybe if I can, complete my report unless there are any questions on any of the topics mentioned, but I maybe move on if we can with the business administrator report and talk about general assurances.
If that sounds good, yes, I think that sounds good.
Okay. So as part of certainly a June 1 deadline, historically, each year the board has considered and approved or taken action on general assurances and as a requirement of participation in federal programs and federal grants. And I know that our entire board is well aware of what I would say is the distinct difference in this current iteration for the 25-26 application, which is well underway and we've, both Catherine and Suzanne have worked to complete the initial application. As a first step of the eligibility and application, the board needs to approve the general assurances. I think what is at stake here in terms of the board's discussion is that we are all aware of the change in what has been included in the general assurances and what the board is in some ways certifying or assuring to relative to compliance. As late as yesterday, the New Hampshire Department of Education amended the document. Those, as I alerted you earlier today, I feel in some ways that those are material changes to the general assurance. However, and the biggest however and the but, there's still, what I would say, included in the general assurances and demands on systems, some problematic language. And I would say what puts the district in a different place as opposed to many other of the systems across the state is because we are now officially joined as a plaintiff in the NEA versus US Department of Ed legal lawsuit. The language that is in this current general assurance around the Dear Colleague Letter, really, we are in some ways protected by the temporary injunction and ultimately maybe by a summary judgment of a federal court relative to our involvement. And so that does provide a little bit in terms of our standing on this document relative to any retaliation, any kind of action in the future, as long as that is in place. My, in consultation with legal counsel, and I've shared with you, the one recommendation or consideration is if the board is willing to move forward and sign the assurances in terms of what is required, that we have prepared an addendum, which I think there are two versions, one if we were not to sign, one to sign, that really limits from the voice of the school board, the signature to identify that we will continue to uphold our responsibilities around meeting federal statutes, for example, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title IX. But we will not, we are recognizing through that addendum that we do not agree with the interpretations of law, which is really problematic relative to what has now been included, as part of our sign-off on the general assurances. We don't know how that will be interpreted relative to the New Hampshire Department of Education, but I think through legal counsel, that action by the board would at least protect in the future, any kind of action relative to our, you know, challenging US Department of Ed's action towards the district if someone were to report or if they were to investigate us. And I think that's really important to point out before you deliberate, that by signing this and then agreeing to, and then being faced potentially for something that has yet to happen in the future, we would have the ability of due process, we have the ability to challenge any kind of action by the Department of Education, and then we would be able to take legal action in the future. The difference with the prior discussion around the superintendent certification form, which I did not sign, but submitted an addendum, is that we have that current protection around the court case, that in some ways is an umbrella against any action by the Department of Ed for any capricious or arbitrary decision relative to their interpretation of the law. This is a bit different in standing short of what I would say, the Dear Colleague Letter. But there is an opportunity to challenge anything in the future or any other statutory actions through due process and through legal action as well. I think the, my one comment to the board is that we do know in fact that if the board tonight was decided to not to sign and move forward with signing general assurances, that our ability to apply for federal grants based on what we've been told would be eliminated. That is, we would certainly place in a vulnerable position around the IDA money, which is about $504,000 based on current numbers, and our Title II allocations, about $60,000. I'm not sure today if I would say that the USDA school nutrition grant, which is, you know, all total, we're talking about all monies, would be about $721,000. But this, this conversation the board's having is that it would impact about 1% of next year's budget relative to what would be addressed through the decision not to move forward and the uncertainty around that. I would say in my discussions with Amy, that we would need to plan for based on a board decision, where we would find the, in our IDA grant application, we tie salaries to those funding, so we would have to shift those salaries into our operating budget, which means right off the bat, we would have to account for the shortfall of about a half, you know, half a million dollars. Just to give the board a sense of what that represents, that would be equal to about six to seven teaching positions that we would need to eliminate to be able to account for that as an example. I'm not suggesting that's where it would come from, but that is just to give you a sense of program impact relative to the decisions that you're making this evening.
And just so we're on the same page, thank you for that. The general assurances that we were asked to sign a few weeks ago have changed as of last evening. They took out in page one of 16, Section 6A, now reads the same as the assurances that we signed last year. They removed the executive order about wasteful government DEI programs. And then in subsection B, the Title IX section, also reads the same as the assurances that we read last year or signed last year. It removed the defending women from gender ideology section. What stayed in, and I think what Dr. Shapps was referring to as problematic, is on page two of 16, that Section K, the requirements of any other statutes, administrative rules, executive order, Dear Colleague Letter, or non-regulatory guidance which may apply to the application. There, I think, is some wiggle room that whether that says future or not, I don't know. I don't see the word future and I read that as current. So what's available now, and then if it was to change, it would change the terms of the assurances. But I can't be confident of that in today's political climate, if I'm being polite. I'm open for any discussion or comments, please.
Sorry. I think where I'm confused is if we go ahead and sign and we have the addendum, how does that impact our participation in the lawsuit? Like I guess I'm a little bit confused about, does this, by signing these assurances, I know at one time there was a concern about, you know, would we be seen as not having standing, I think, in the lawsuit?
And I feel with confidence that these things are not in some ways connected. That is, it would not change our standing as a plaintiff. The Judge McCaffrey's decision was very narrow in scope in terms of the preliminary injunction. It really had to do with the certification form that I was faced with signing and the Dear Colleague Letter. The executive, the executive orders that had been already in place were not connected to this and any other statutes. It was really limited in scope to those two, what I would say, areas that has been contested. I think it's hard to say. I did share that GLAD Law had sent a letter to the commissioner. I can't tell you if there will be after this legal action in a form to challenge the basis of this, but at least we are not harmed by taking one step as a board to participate in that suit and any decision here on this. I hope that answers the question.
So I think our discussion should be to answer questions and clear confusion, but also the two choices we're facing tonight, facing tonight are to sign, actually would be three, I guess. We could sign and just have that be our action. We could not sign and have that be our action. Or we could sign with the second addendum that was in the backup, which essentially says, I'm bringing it up, that we're signing them, but we're signing them with the understanding that we don't agree with the interpretations in the general assurances and that we will have been and will be complying with all established law, which is something that we've done as a district for multiple, multiple years.
And I wanted to say, it is consistent with the addendum that I presented to the state relative to non-compliance with the certification form, but stating very clearly, we have previously and will continue to meet our expectations around filing all federal law and statutes and any regulations. So this addendum is just amplifying that relative to the idea that we always are responsible. We have policies that certainly speak to our compliance with federal law. Our actions will do that and that's what we'll continue to do.
Sorry, again, I just, I just feel like this is so complicated, honestly. And I just want to make sure like I'm understanding it clearly. So again, we sign it, we have the addendum that should not jeopardize our getting our funding because we've signed the assurances. Am I understanding that?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay. And so the only, the only situation where we're jeopardizing our funding is if we decide not to, not to sign them at all. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
Okay.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Shapps. The funding that we receive from the IDA grants, we have to submit an application. And one of the requirements for that submission of that application is signing these assurances. So if we don't sign, we can't even apply. If we do sign, we can apply, but I don't know, I mean, even if we sign with no addendum, I don't know that our funds would be guaranteed. They've already, previously this year, said they were going to be less and then they came back with more and it's a, it's a, it's a big amount of money and I am not, I don't want to kowtow to a threat of losing funds, but it has to be considered.
I can feel everybody looking at me. So basically, we kind of look at it this way, is that there's kind of two components. Is that one, you either have 500, around $560,000 on the line or including the USDA money, about $1.3 million on the line. And that would be if you, if we said no. My current view is... My current view is, probably the best idea would be to sign it with the caveats that were outlined in the letter, to, to protect us in that. But I wanted to make something clear, that the edits to the general assurances were quite clever, because the executive orders, numbers that were removed from the language, are still utterly extant in the document, because it's telling that you have to obey the executive orders. So they're removed from the language, but the executive orders are still present. The argument here, of course, is that executive orders are not the rule of law, and therefore interpretable, and that's currently what's being challenged. So that's why I'm saying that it's still clever, because everything is still there. I would disagree with that in this case. I do absolutely think this is, includes all future executive orders. I think it will go for the whole year. It's not going to be the ones that are valid as of June 1st, it'll be anything that goes for the next year. So I guess something that I have a concern with that, is that normally, I think, previous years, and going back to various different administrations, the executive orders did not come in the form that they are now. And so that was why there would have been no objection to anybody signing a document of this nature. I mean, last year and the year before, I was like, no, looks fine to me. So that's kind of the cautionary tale on this one. The one thing I wanted to make really clear to the general public, which I think was, just to reiterate, that I think people were not understanding in the discussion that was showing up on social media, was the fact that there was a whole bunch of money on the line. And of course, there's a deep irony here, is that some of the language, talking about inclusivity, well, we're talking about money coming from IDA, which by definition includes inclusivity, because we're trying to include and make sure we're covering and educating students of all stripes and colors and abilities and disabilities. So there's a certain irony in the fact that the language that I would consider to be almost extortion, was what was, what's at stake here. So there's still a principle to be had. But I just wanted to make sure people understand that there is money on the line, and that's some of the choices. I know that this year, the budget is very tight, and it's likely to get tighter, and the decision isn't a black and white one, when people are trying to think about this, and thinking about this at home, as the board makes a decision.
I just want to clarify, the five, the IDA is 504, based on, 504,000 based on current year allocations, or we don't know yet. Title II is 60, 58,900. The school nutrition is 158, so all told, it was 721. So that's what I was referring to.
Oh, my math was wrong. I apologize.
And I, I just also wanted to say, I agree with you. There is the inconsistency, and legal counsel has suggested that, that it was a clever move to eliminate the, in the first part, the executive orders, but there is some question as to whether this, what this means now, relative to what's left into it. I think, but my, my comment earlier, and I would stand by it, in the future, the US Department of Ed would have to file a complaint, there would have to be due process, to see if in any way we are in violation. We would have it to challenge that process, and we could take legal action, you know, as a last step relative to that. And weighing the funds that are at risk relative to the cost of that litigation, it's hard to say, but that would be a very narrow focus, based on some complaint coming forward by the Department of Ed. And I think that, so, so to plan in the future for something that, to, to litigate and/or challenge, versus knowing that, you know, here and now, we would be challenged by the loss of those funds.
Right. And, oh, go ahead, Renee.
I was just going to, just give my opinion here, having had lots of conversations around this topic, professionally as well. I think we should sign them, and add the cover letter. This isn't a great feeling for people out there, when they, when they think about us making, or taking a stand, and they're proud of our district for joining the ACO lawsuit. And I really understand that. I also understand how important IDA funds are for school districts, having right, seven of those grants myself, for my, my day job. And we don't even get any further unless you have the general assurances signed and uploaded. You don't get any further. And ID funds are directly impact daily services for students on IEPs. We're talking about behavioral health services, we're talking about communication services, like, it's really, it really is unfortunate that we have to have the discussion, but I, I really think we should sign it, because those funds are crucial and important, and we, we can't make it up. And these are some of our neediest students and population that need these services. And we do a great job with it, and Kathy does a great job managing the IDA funds, and it goes directly to students on IEPs. And so I would, I would caution against not signing it, and not being able to apply for that grant and get those funds.
So, and I guess one of my thoughts is that, even if we don't sign it, the federal government could still come, like, could still come after us. I mean, just because we don't sign it, they could still say, you're still in violation of this, whether you signed it or not. So I don't know that, you know, not, not signing it, it truly, all it is really, is taking a stand. And I understand the importance, and I do appreciate everyone that wrote to us. We did receive many letters today, and I always appreciate hearing from the community. But I agree. I mean, I think, in this situation, to sign it, include the, the cover letter, the addendum, and we're not actually changing what we're doing, because we are, we are, you know, basically, as it says here, like, we believe that we are following the law, like, we are doing what we need to be doing for our students. So I do agree with Renee, and, you know, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think not signing it really, you know, it puts a lot in jeopardy, and it doesn't necessarily truly even protect us ultimately.
So, just to kind of add in, I'm feeling similar to you, to Renee, and Denise, and even where Gianna had spoke about moving forward with it. I don't have a question necessarily, but one of the things that I think is really important to reiterate is how closely, Dr. Shapps, you've been working with legal counsel on this, and it's probably many, multiple times throughout a day, to kind of talk through all of the nuances of this. And I really appreciate you sharing that with us, and keeping us in the loop on that. I think, in years past, you know, everybody would look at the general assurances and just say, yep, no problem, we're good to go. It was almost like a checkbox type of thing. But now, you know, we're all looking at it with this really, you know, fine-tooth comb, microscope type, type of view, and it is so important that we make sure that we continue to reach out to our, our legal advisors, and, and keep that open communication there. So I'm of similar, of mindset as well, as to everybody else. Thank you.
I agree. I agree with everything Renee said. I think that's the thing that makes me absolutely the angriest, is that it is our most vulnerable populations. It's our kids on IEPs, it's our kids who need free and reduced lunch. It makes me so angry. But I think we should sign it, and I think we should sign it with version two of the cover letter, and I'm, like, can I go ahead and make the motion? Like, or, go ahead.
No, I have some thoughts from Sean, who's not able to be with us this evening, and also, I'd like to add my thoughts. I'm going to add mine first, because it, I was thinking the same thing, and I even wrote down that, the fact that the state would choose to put those students at risk in any district is disgusting, and embarrassing, and I don't like it. I don't know how to say that in legal terms, maybe it's signing with the addendum, but it's, it's extremely disappointing, and I don't, I don't have words for that. Sean did ask me to read this. It's not a vote, but it is his thoughts on the matter. He says, "Striking a balance of what is right and what is needed can be challenging. In this instance, what is right is sticking to the foundational principles of ORCSD's mission to provide welcoming and safe learning environment to all students. What is needed is to gain the funding to fulfill that mission. To move forward, there will be compromise. To not compromise could mean not providing valuable services to ORCSD students, staff, and families that they are accustomed to." So I read that as also, signing the assurances with the addendum. If anyone has any further comments. Go ahead.
You can do it.
Oh, all right. I am going to, oh, Stella, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's quite all right. I just wanted to say one thing, that's just, it's more of a general encapsulation of what you all have been saying, which is just, like, I think what matters is what we do at our level, for, like, for who we can. And so if that means signing it, and then knowing that with that, we're going to take that and use it to help these people, then, then that's the right thing, and that's what matters. And so I think that I'm all for, what you guys agree with.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. So I'm going to refer to that addendum as addendum, the addendum, as opposed, no?
Version two.
Addendum version two, okay. I'm going to make a motion to authorize the board chair and superintendent to sign the fiscal year 2026 general assurances with, with the addendum version two. Can I have a second? Heather, second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Five, sorry, one, two, three, four, five in favor? All opposed? And any abstentions? One abstention, Gianna Gelsi. Gelsi, oh, sorry. All right, bear with me a minute. Okay. Thank you for that. It's not an easy choice, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness and input. Moving on to the finance committee report.
So, finance met for the first time on Monday. Sadly, they elected me as chair, so you get to hear me talk some more. So we spent the meeting talking about the pace of the year, and what we'd like to discuss. It was of me, Gianna, and Sean, and Amy, and Robert. And so we are going to meet in two weeks to go through Finance Bootcamp 101, so we are all using the same language. And then we've sort of paced out meetings to start working on the budget schedule for fiscal year '27, because that's coming up. Yay! And that is, and then we, we got a preview of what we'll talk about next meeting, for the facilities fees, and we talked about that bit, but we'll save that for later. And that is it for finance.
Okay, then I'm going to take this moment to point out that you're leaving, but only to say, only to say, congratulations, good luck in the future, and thank you again so much for all of your hard work. And congratulations, Dad. Rookie move. Moving on to the unanimous consent agenda, does anyone like to discuss this item? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda, which includes a letter of resignation for a high school position. Second from Denise. All in favor? Six in favor. Well, moving on to the discussion and action items. The first is the 25-26 board meeting schedule. Does anyone, you know what I'll do? I'll make a motion to adopt the 25-26 board meeting schedule in a second. Denise, thank you. And any discussion on this? Heather, please.
Okay, because reading was not very fundamental for me. I had to ask Wendy a question. So, January, we have three meetings. The January 7th meeting is the meeting with Barrington, and then that should be our normal board meeting, because that's the first Wednesday of the month. But that won't be a normal board meeting, that'll be the Barrington meeting, and on the 14th will be a normal board meeting with the bond and budget hearing before the meeting, and then we're back to the normal schedule on the 21st, for the third meeting, third week, Wednesday of the month, will be the second normal board meeting of the month. So, like, I got confused. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody had on their calendars, we've got three meetings.
I would also point out that this does include July 23rd as our school meeting for July, which is not, it is the third, I'm sorry, the fourth Wednesday in July. So instead of the 16th, we're moving that meeting one week out to the 23rd. Okay? Does anyone else have any, anything to ask, or discussions about this meeting? Okay. All in favor of the, of the motion? Six in favor. Thank you. Moving on to the construction manager for the elementary entry project.
So I provided the board background, just on the process, for our recommending both, first, the construction management services contract for the elementary renovation and expansion project. I would say that, you know, beginning, when we started to talk about moving forward with the warrant and this process, we had committed to the community, certainly it came up in our forums, our information forums, of full transparency, of our commitment to go out into the marketplace, to really seek through cost efficiencies and qualifications the best firms to move forward. That said, we went forward with RFPs, and we did have responses from a number of firms. We--
I'm going to interrupt real quick. RFP?
Pardon? Request for proposal.
Request for proposal, okay, no, that's--
For management services and civil engineering. Our initial review of the, the applications, we, we, I said, the team looking at that, eliminated several firms based on either their price structure that was inconsistent with what we expected, as well as lack of experience. So there were several, there were six firms, I believe, that submitted applications. The, the interview committee moved forward to interview three firms for construction management services. They used the scoring rubric, as I described, to evaluate each firm, and it is through their work and follow-up that they have made a recommendation, and I'm recommending the Ekman Construction for Construction Management Services. So I don't know if there are any questions. I'll start there.
Sure. I just want to read the scoring rubric that you used. The criteria that you used were, here in the memo, the pre-construction fees, the construction phase and change order fees, general conditions, K through 12 phased and occupied projects, that's being able to work with people in the building, site logistics plans, the number of employees, construction management software, and the number of team members.
That is correct. And Dave Taddy, he is here, and I've asked Dave if there's any particular questions about that process. Both Dave and Amy really were central to the RFP review process, and just the evaluation and the scoring of the firms. So I think what Dave would say, and certainly give him a chance, that K-12 phased occupied project, part of the scoring rubric was critically important, as you alluded to, because this will be a project where the safety access, about for students and staff, over the length period of time, is the number one criteria of concern. What is the experience with these firms managing a project that unfolds this way, and their ability to kind of convey through the interview process, their plan to keep everyone safe and ensure there's no disruption to learning. And I think that was, I just want to emphasize that is a key element of the scoring and presentation, and the applications. Dave, I don't know if you--
I know it's late, and I'll, I'll try to move quickly. If I speak too quickly, someone will just throw a shoe at me, and I'll slow down a little bit. But, yeah, certainly, the experience with phased occupied construction is a large criteria. As Dr. Shapps said, we're going to have construction equipment moving and operating while we've got little kids in the same locus. So we want people with experience of that. So the CM process, the RFP, a request for proposal process, starts where we issued the RFP, that was publicly advertised on our website, and I also called a bunch of contractors just to bring it to their attention. And that document's 12 pages long. That's not just a, hey-- a, hey, we need a contractor. There's a lot that goes into that. It talks about our project, it talks about our criteria for selection, talks about general conditions and what we expect from contractors, and it gives them a place to, to question any of our things that we've put forward. The next piece of that is, we had a mandatory bidder's walkthrough. So any contractors that were thinking about bidding on our property had to come spend a half a day with me. We walked the complete Mohermit project for two hours, showed them everything, talked about what we were thinking about doing, hopped in our cars and drove over to Mastway and did it again. So we had seven contractors attended that mandatory walkthrough. So only those seven contractors could then bid on the project. Of those seven, six chose to bid on the contract. As Dr. Shap said, we eliminated three in the first review, based either on lack of experience or excessive fees. We were left with three contractors that we interviewed, the three contractors we interviewed were Bowlin Construction, Bonnet Pageant Stone or BPS Construction, and Ekman Construction. And using the scoring rubric that Dr. Shap's talked about, we ended up with, Bowlin had 17 and a half points, BPS had 42.5 points, and Ekman Construction had 47 points. It was a weighted criteria. In the heaviest weight, we gave two points for the category of phased occupied experience, one point for fees and cost, and the initial site logistics that was mentioned. We only put a half a point on number of employees, because it is important, certainly, but maybe not the most important thing. And when you run all those numbers through the machine, those are the numbers that you come up with, and we selected Ekman. Or, well, you may select Ekman, we're recommending Ekman.
Okay. Ekman, I'm seeing here stipulated that if the bond failed to pass, there would be a $0. They wouldn't-
Yeah, so that's one of the, to me, one of the very attractive things about their proposal. The proposal gives the, the CM an opportunity to give us a fee for pre-bond services, because they're going to do a ton of work, bidding out, getting every single discipline in the construction process is going to be bid multiple times over iterations of design improvement. So they're, they're putting in many, many, many hours. And if the bond were not to pass, a person may expect to be paid for those hours. And the way Ekman put it forward is they have skin in the game. They're our partner in this. If, if the bond does not pass, we don't owe them anything. They, they will do all that work without, without charge. If the bond passes, then there'll be a $30,000 fee for those pre-construction services.
And did their bid fit within our sort of ballpark estimations for the bond?
Yes, that's one of the questions in the, in the RFP, is we've kind of, we throw out a ballpark and say, do you think that we can achieve, you've seen what we want to achieve, you know roughly what we're talking about for dollars, do you think that we can, that this is realistic? And yes, they believe so.
Okay. I don't want to dominate, I apologize. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. If no one has any other questions, then-
I didn't say that.
Oh, no, I'm saying, go ahead.
The CM software. That was weighted-
Actually, we didn't assign any points for CM software, because that was really just informational.
Yeah.
We didn't want-
Because we don't have a system it needs to integrate into, so it seems like it wouldn't necessarily matter too much beyond the fact they had a package.
Agreed. It was informational. There, there was not any points assigned for the right or wrong software, because I don't think there is a right or wrong software.
The, the fact that Ekman's willing to do the work at risk, but then the fee is actually larger than the pre-construction fees of the other two is interesting. So that is an important caveat to that. Is it a fixed fee? It's not time and materials job, it's a flat fee?
The, the pre-construction services is a fixed fee.
Was, for the other two that did have pre-construction fees on bond fail, was that just a portion of their total fee? So if it passed with, say, BPS, there would be additional monies owed?
Yes, with BPS, there would be, you would pay a fixed fee for pre-construction.
Okay.
Or not it passed.
Okay.
And then you'd move into the construction phase fees.
Okay.
Do you have any experience with Ekman through any of your other-
Yes, I worked with Ekman Construction at the Spalding High School. We redid the administrative offices and fire prevention systems in a 1939 building, and the work was fantastic. They were easy to work with. I believe Ms. Ransom has worked with Ekman in other districts in the past as well. So we, yeah, there's some, certainly some good experience with Ekman here in the district.
And then my last question for now, I guess. Was there any substantial differences in the phased construction approach between the three? Were there some things that were attractive that we learned from other contractors that we might want to adopt, or are they still broad strokes on the phasing?
They're, they're still broad strokes. One, I, one of the contractors didn't bring us any phased preliminary approach to logistics. So that was a little bit telling. And of the two that did, you know, they're slightly different approaches, but they both offer some good ideas. And as we get into it, we'll see how it shapes up.
So I know we're in the, maybe the process of putting together the, a building committee. Is that, where, where do they fit into this, or is that still-
So the building committee is well underway. We've had, we've had two meetings. We'll have our third this Thursday. The initial meeting with, we have three community members who are part of it, all have, I would say, professional expertise, or are in this area of this line of work. We have an architect, a mechanical engineer, and I think a civil engineer.
So, yeah, if I can jump in on that, the, we'll talk about the design team and the construction team. And these are the pieces that we're trying to get in play now. And we need them all in play now in order to get us to a GMP. That's a guaranteed maximum price. And we need that number to, for a March bond vote. In order to be ready for March bond vote, we're going to need that number in the fall when we start putting together our budget. So that's really what we're marching towards, and we need the construction people and the complete design team. So in the, in the design team, there's the architect. We're working with Novo Studio Architects. As direct subcontractors to the architect, with fiduciary responsibility to the architect, there is an MEP, Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Design. And Novo had a competitive bid process and select, and they reviewed that with me. They've selected WV Engineering to handle that. Also working directly under the architect is a structural engineer, also a competitive bid process, and Novo chose Foley-Buell-Roberts. They were the structural engineers on this building. I've worked with them on several projects over the years. They're a fine firm. So that's all under architect. The other piece of the design team is civil. So we're going to also talk tonight about civil engineering. And under civil, with a fiduciary responsibility directly to the civil engineer, will be geotechnical. So all those disciplines is the design team. And they're going to feed information over to the construction team, who we're hopefully going to choose tonight. The construction team through this iterative process, they're going to keep looking at the information the design team feeds them, they're going to keep bidding it out, but they're going to keep getting feedback from their contractors. Sometimes, an engineer can put something on paper and it looks great, and you give it to the contractor who's actually going to do the work, and they look at it and they say, wow, if you move that over there and move that over there, I can do it for half the price. So that's the kind of, they call value engineering, the feedback loop that keeps going on between all of them. And that's the whole team that we need in place to get us to a GMP.
And if I could bring it back to the building committee, which I think you, was your primary question. The building committee that we have in place is looking at the building condition survey as one charge, to look at all the capital work that was identified in the, in the summer and the fall through Novo Studio. And they're also, I'd say, looking at the progress of the current work under the, this, this elementary renovation expansion. We toured, at our second meeting, we did a complete indoor/outdoor tour of Mohermit. Thursday, we're going to repeat that process at Mastway, so that there was a real clear understanding of what was reported and what we're looking at in terms of this project. And then Novo Studio in June is going to meet with the building committee and present and talk about where they are in the process as well. So that is an additional group that is part of the board in terms of a committee that is really, you know, I would say, engaged in the process as well. And that's, I, I think we're off to a good start.
Okay, thank you. That was really helpful. That was where I was going. But Dave, I really appreciate the additional detail that you provided, because that was actually going to be my next question. So you read my mind.
I knew that was going to be your next question.
It's all good.
I just jumped ahead.
Questions, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, okay. I'll just make the motion. I will make a motion to accept Ekman Construction for Construction Manager for the elementary renovation project. Can I have a second, Kelly? Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Six in favor, none opposed. All right. And now we will move to the civil work, civil engineer discussion, which is pretty similar, with the same criteria.
So very similar process. We issue an RFP. This one was only eight pages long. It was publicly advertised, and I also called to different firms. I called Civil Works, Ty &amp; Bond, and Hayner Swanson. Hayner Swanson was the civil engineer on this project. Ty &amp; Bond, I've worked with many times over the years. And Civil Works has done a lot of work already on the Mastway and Mohermit locus. So that's an important thing to remember, because they have a lot of their civil engineering controls, stakes and elevations. They have things already done in the ground. They can go to that site with already a lot of legwork done. And that was really reflected in the bids. So of the three people I talked to, two people responded. It was Civil Works and Ty &amp; Bond. And Ty &amp; Bond bid $110,000. Civil Works, for the same scope of work, bid $65,500. And that's largely because they have done a lot of legwork. But in order to make sure that we didn't miss anything, we sat down with the architect and Civil Works and went over the, the scope of work and what was included, and everyone is satisfied that Civil Works is going to give us what we need for $65,500.
So this is largely site civil cut-fill work for them?
Yes. It's, and also, as I said earlier, geotech works on-
That was my next question. Are we doing borings? We're expecting to have to do borings?
Yes.
65s kind of lean when you hire the firm to come out and do the boring analysis. It seems a little small for getting the geotechnical team out to do the borings.
The structural engineer won't stamp, stamp the plans without the borings. So we're going to do the borings. And it is small. It's probably only a few thousand dollars worth of work.
Really? That, okay. Because every time we, yeah, okay. I, I, okay.
And this is soil samples of the ground to make sure it can hold the structure that we're looking for?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Any further questions? Okay. I'll make a motion again. A motion to accept Civil Works as the civil engineer for the elementary renovation project. Can I have a second, Renee? All in favor? Six in favor, none opposed. Okay. We'll move on. Thank you for that, Mr. Todd, Toddie, and thank you, Dr. Shap's. Move on to the policy discussion. And we will ask the chair of the policy committee, Kelly Ikiz.
Okay, so I'll, I'll kind of combine it a little bit. So the, the policy, in its policy committee, in its new makeup, met for the first time on May 8th. And at that point in time, I was elected the chair of the committee. We read through several policies. So I'll go through the, the motion, and then we can see if there's any discussion. Does that work? I make a motion to approve the list of the following policies for first read or deletion. So the policies are DK, payments, checks, and manifests. EBCA, crisis prevention and emergency response plans. EBCD, emergency closings for first read. Okay. There are also policies for deletion. These policies are DK, payment manifest in its current iteration, and EBCA, emergency plans in its current iteration for deletion. A motion for a second?
Does anyone have any questions?
Just-
Oh, please.
As far as the manifest, it doesn't look like it really changes what is happening now, right? I mean, it's still like the two, the way that I've read it, it's still basically assigning two members of the board to review the manifest, correct?
Please, Amy.
There really isn't a substantial change. It just cleaned things up more, the timing, like it said so much before this. And so we just kind of cleaned it out to do exactly what we do do.
We also felt that the, the NH SBA version was, was better for what we, we needed. So that was, Amy reviewed it before we came into policy. So there was very little changes that we made overall to it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the policies for first read and deletion? Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you very much. Are there any other committee updates? All right, seeing none.
Well, hang on.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. The wellness committee did meet yesterday. I wasn't able to attend. So Suzanne, if you might be able to jump in?
So we had our last meeting of the year. We talked about the goals that we had set forth for ourselves, and then reviewed for next year, talked about what we'd like to do next year. The wellness committee definitely would like to increase our focus on our three subcommittees that we have. One is, I'm going to do this from memory here. One is policy, the other is faculty and staff wellness. And then the third this year was around cellphones. We're going to shift that really and look at our website and communication of what we do. That's going to be one of our focuses for next year. And so we, we would like to do another community dinner next year, so that will be on everyone's calendar. We won't be doing it right away in the fall, but we will be having one. And we talked a little bit about, in our first meeting, we did set the date. I'm not able to give you that date today because I don't have it to memory. But we did set our first date, and that will go out to the members of the wellness committee, and will be posted on our website as well.
So the, I'm going to forget the name of it, the community and belonging committee, because we renamed it, so it hasn't stuck in my brain yet. But we, we met for the last time this year, and said our, kind of had a last, thank you to Rachel for all her work in the district. And we had a very interesting discussion about whether we'd want to go to space or go to the depths of the ocean if we were sure we weren't going to die. That was a big caveat. But anyway, it was kind of a lighthearted last meeting of our year. And again, really to thank Rachel for all the work that she's done.
Yes, please.
So as Robert said, the building committee has been meeting with a very aggressive, every-two-weeks schedule at the moment. So in Robert and Heather's week of fun, this will be finance, this one, and building tomorrow. So yay. But one of the things at the last meeting, David Goldsmith was very kind to come, and he and Dave Toddie together walked the, we walked the perimeter of the exterior of the building and talked all about the bits and bobs out there. Things that were really interesting that I didn't know about the building. It was, it was pretty cool. And then we, David Goldsmith took us through the interior of the building, really talked about the educational spaces and their purposes, and just things that have changed since the adults in the room were children, and the types of needs schools have now in the truly inadequate space in that building for some of those needs. And while I had gotten that tour earlier, the other committee members, this was their first time through, and it was really striking to them about how much work really is needed to make a lot of that really functional. We're making it work, but in order to- We're making it work, but in order to make it really the way it should be, we need to do some work to the building. We need to do a fair amount of work to the building. And so that was a really good thing, and we're going to do that same thing with Mastway tomorrow. Yeah?
I've got a community update as well. This was sustainability met on the 12th. The main summation on that one was that part of the goals going forward for next year would be continue to work and help hopefully have something concrete regarding recommendations for policy regarding, the actual policy in the school district regarding sustainability, because the policy as it stands right now is a bit outdated, and some of the information we had is from actually pre-COVID. And so there's some things that have changed, and some things that we've actually already done, and things like that. So we want to try and make it so it's a more cohesive policy that can give more guidance and also has checks for what is realistically possible and what else we can do. So it was a good summation of the year. Amy was the note taker at the time, so if she has anything to add, jump on in. Okay.
Just on the building committee, I wanted to say thank you to the three community members that have volunteered to put in their time on the committee, and I appreciate that. Any other committee updates? Okay. We'll move on to public comments. Is anyone here with a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Closing actions. Our future meeting dates are the, just the two regular meetings in June, the 4th and the 18th. Those will both be here. The next item is a, the first of two non-public sessions. So I'm going to make a motion to move into a non-public session under RSA 91-a:32c, the discussion of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a school board member. Can I have a second for that? Kelly, thank you. And a roll call though, please.
Renee Bennett, yes.
John Jelcius, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
Heather Smith, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Kelly Ickes, yes.
Thank you very much.